Live on PSC TV, channel one ninety-one on spectrum cable in Pasco and Renshaw and is streamed in the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call, please?
Member Brown?
President.
Campos?
President.
Lee?
Here.
Roach?
President.
Serrano?
Here.
Mayor Pro- excuse me, Mayor Protan Maloney?
President.
And Mayor Barajas.
Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you for that, and we will actually follow our agenda and skip right into the executive session. We do have exec- executive session. Item four A, discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero one I for ten minutes, so we will return at seven twelve.
There is a need to extend for another 10 minutes to return at 7:44. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the chair, you can allow those to take place now related to that particular motion that you just made and was adopted. Or as the meeting goes on, if folks want to discuss certain items that were related to that executive session, they're now free to do so.
Okay. I did open it for any discussion and comments from council. There's none on our end. I'll open it to the public. Are there any questions or comments from the public per this motion? Mr. Grambois.
Staffing Council, Thomas Grambois, 108 North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. Is the timer on yet? Okay, good. I just want to start off tonight's public comment by saying my wife and my son and I had a chance to go to the International Park Day event downtown Pasco. It was pretty great to see folks out and enjoying the downtown. I know it was a tough, it was a tough to get a lot of people out because there was Sausage Fest, which I believe is the number two event in the Tri-Cities, as well as some major football games on it. We're really looking forward to coming downtown and making this a regular thing. And I also wanted to talk about the letter that was released. I've, I've had the opportunity to have my name used in attacks against others who, just, just completely weaponized without, without my consent. And I know that those, that the folks whose names were used in that letter, how they must be feeling. It's a terrible feeling, David. I've had a chance to get to know you throughout the years before you were even on council. And we would sit and talk. And I know that those, those words and feelings were not, are not part of your heart. Stephen, I've had a chance to talk with you as well. I know we're supposed to address council, but I think it's pertinent to, to this. I know that that's not part of Stephen's feelings as well. I've had a chance to work with him quite a bit and see how he operates, and it's not, not in his heart. There's a second, there's a motion on a second. Shall we do a roll call vote? No need? No need, okay, thank you. Okay. And with that, we'll move on to again item number seven. Oh, sorry, yes, we do need a vote. It was, motion was made seconded by Councilman Milne. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So there's six, yes, one no. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we move forward. Okay, so do we, I think we need some clarification, Mr. Ferguson.
Sure, so the, you can go forward, you can make comments now if you if you want to take those comments as the chair, you can allow those to take place now related to that particular motion that you just made and and was adopted. Or as the meeting goes on, if folks want to discuss certain items that were related to that executive session, they're now free to do so.
Okay. I did open it for any discussion comments from council. There's none on our end. I'll open it to the public. Are there any questions or comments from the public per this motion? Mr. Grambois.
Meeting staff and council, Thomas Grambois, one oh eight North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. Is the timer on yet? Okay, good. I just want to start off tonight's public comment by saying my wife and my son and I had a chance to go to the International Park ing day event downtown Pasco. It was pretty great to see folks out and enjoying the downtown. I know it was a tough. It was a tough to get a lot of people out because there was sausage fest, I believe, which I believe is the number two event in the tri cities as well as some major football games on, but we're really looking forward to coming downtown and making this a regular thing. And I also wanted to talk about the the letter that was released. I've, I've had the opportunity to have my name used in attacks against others who just just completely weaponized without without my consent. And I know that those, that the folks whose names were used in that letter, how they must be feeling. It's a terrible feeling, David. I've had a chance to get to know you throughout the years before you were even on council. And we would sit and talk and I know that those those words and feelings were not are not part of your heart. Stephen, I've had a chance to talk with you as well. I know we're supposed to address council, but I think it's pertinent to to this. I know that that's not part of Stephen's feelings as well. I've had a chance to work with him quite a bit and see how he operates and it's not not in his heart. And Pete, I don't, I didn't have a chance to know you, but I know that others vouch for you and I'm sure that that's not how you feel as well and it's unfair. But I think that it's more important to recognize that our names being used as attacks is nothing in comparison to those who are actually being attacked. We have to take, we have to take a step back and we have to put ourselves in the shoes of people who have been attacked because of their gender, because of their religion, or because of their race. It's, it's to to victimize ourselves is completely unfair and I don't think that you've done that, but I just think that everybody listening should should recognize that. In regards to the letter itself, I think that it's important that communications like this become a part of the public comment. And that that we can see it because it's really, it's important to open up the curtains and show the community what you guys are dealing with on a regular basis. And and really shine some light on there and let the people who write these letters know that these, that these words are just words of empty impotent men who who just, that's the only thing they can do is threaten and and try and cause division in the community. And these people are not the voice of the community. We need to let them know right off the bat. And it's been good to see that that the community is getting together and talking against this because we just don't need this. It's just unacceptable. And to to highlight this also sort of gets away or takes away that argument that, oh, this doesn't happen here because it does. And the more that we shine light on it, the more we can disinfect it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from Chambers in regards to the executive session? Or the or the motion that was made earlier?
I have no idea what your executive session said, so I can only surmise, but.
Regarding the motion, sorry.
Uh, Luanda Hatch Franklin County. I don't come to the city council meeting that often because I live out in the county. But I am part of the Republican Party. I also was born in nineteen sixty five. And in nineteen sixty eight, my godfather was a black police officer, the same year Martin Luther King was murdered. And my, I have two black sisters. One is African American, one is black American, one is from Liberia. When we were young, we, my dad lost his gas station in Richland. We ended up living in the projects in Seattle. We were the only white family there. And we lived in a duplex with a black family. And those young men were the best. They were older than us and we'd do camel chases. They were awesome and they became part of us. And we're still close to those people today. And I have my my step nephew is the football coach Leon Jackson. My sister's a scientist out at Richland and is a Democrat. And as soon as she heard this, she was upset and reached out to me because she knows me. I have a nephew and niece, a couple other nephews, my sister Bio. All different ethnicities and even sex religions in my family. And we all get along because we understand that love is the most important thing. I chose to come to Pasco. We lived in Kennewick. And when we lived in Kennewick, we moved there in seventy. My baby sister was the only black girl in Kennewick. Because the realtors back then directed everybody to East Pasco if you were black and you know that. And you know, at a certain time of night, black people didn't go to Kennewick. And I know that history. And I chose to come to Pasco School District because I wanted to be where I was most comfortable and that is with people of all different beliefs and ethnicities. There's only one human race. We are all brothers and sisters. And I can tell you if I saw, I'm in the Republican Party and if I saw any of these men or anyone with even an undercurrent of racism, not only would they be gone, I would have led the way. And every one of those men know that I am not afraid afraid to tell them what I think. And I am not. And I, I just want you to know, Mr. Brown, this was not only a hate crime against you. It was a hate crime against the city of Pasco, who has always embraced multiculturalism and what we love about Pasco. Why I chose to raise my children here. And it hurts me as much as I know it hurts you. But it was also a hate crime against our party, who is a party of Lincoln. Who anytime you wanted to come, you would be more than welcome. You would be celebrated and we would love to have you here. I have text messages between me and Mr. Serrano about how great you are. I want you to know that. And that was back in June, long before I knew, I didn't know anything about this till Tuesday from our party leader. And so I can tell you, there is no racism in the Republican Party of Pasco. I can't speak for every Republican and I can't speak for every Democrat, but I can tell you we would fish it out and they would not be there. And not only that, I'd chase them out of Pasco too because I love this community. And I think you're a very respectable man. I appreciated your vote on the marijuana issue. And I think that probably we agree more than we disagree. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Virginia Tomlinson. I've worked in Pasco for ten years and lived in Pasco for nine. I respect the work this council does to make Pasco a wonderful place to live. I must state that I'm sorry that in January of this year, you chose to call an executive session to read a letter expressing racist views on the composition of the council. I strongly believe that the content of that letter should have been made public at the time. And I am very grateful to whomever recently filed the paperwork to make that letter public. The letter was much less about Mr. Brown and more about individuals in the community in which we live. Community members need to know for themselves that their fellow residents are expressing racist views to council. It's a reminder to the rest of us that we need to express our views to council. I truly believe and try to act in ways that each person has inherent worth and dignity. And that I treat people with respect and dignity. I know that my actions are supportive of white supremacy culture. And the more I learn about it, the more I want to dismantle white supremacy culture. Stephen Baumann is quoted in the Tri City Herald as stating, quote, "I hope whoever wrote this letter is exposed and prosecuted." I too hope that the author of that letter is required to take responsibility for their words. I also sincerely hope that Pasco City Council trusts the residents of Pasco enough to share to share future attacks with us. Thank you.
Counsel, my name is Stephen Baumann and I would like to request that you would explain what happened in your executive session that you just voted to make public as I also have no idea what happened in that. I would also like to say that I'm extremely disheartened at the way this was handled and would like to have an explanation. Thank you.
Are there any other comments in regards to this motion? No other comments in regard to this motion? Any other public comment on any other matter? Thank you. And then, Mr. Grim.
Good evening, counsel and staff. Peter Harpster, five two five, road forty seven. Yesterday I was driving southbound, oh, sorry, northbound across the Blue Bridge and there's no graffiti on that wall, so that's nice. Couple of things I did over the last couple of weeks in Pasco that are worth mentioning. On Saturday, much to the disappointment of my wife, we participated in a five K for the Benton Franklin Recovery Coalition Center. And thought it was cool that they chose Pasco specifically Wade Park to do that fundraiser at. And there was half a dozen or so elected officials from around the area that participated in that. And then on Friday last week, I attended a ribbon ribbon cutting ceremony for sound audiology. Councilman Serrano was there to on behalf of council. That's cool. They do a lot of work with disabled veterans. I was in the Air Force and lost about thirty percent of my hearing while I was in and have not had a lot of local options. So it's cool that we see that here in Pasco. And then wanted to also mention, kind of give kudos to staff and council for the Fiery Foods Festival. Really big crowds, I think the biggest I've seen in seven or eight years. And when I was a kid, I remember it was just enormous, shoulder to shoulder like the waterfall. So it's nice to see us getting back there and it felt like definitely the biggest crowd since COVID. And then lastly, just wanted to thank Councilman Maloney, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney, excuse me, for his service on the council. I know he's online. And one thing I wanted to say is we've brought a lot of applications to this council as part of the engineering firm that I work for. And in preparing our applications, they can get kind of convoluted and complicated as Mr. Gonzalez is aware. And we spend a lot of time looking at it from lots of different angles, thinking, okay, what questions could come up? What issues are we trying to solve that people might ask about? And we're always prepared for questions from the hearing examiner who's an attorney and no offense, Mr. Ferguson, but we know they like to talk and ask questions. And but when we get done with our application, the point of all this is that we think, okay, what is Mayor Pro Tem Maloney going to ask about? And that's appreciated because it makes us submit a better application, which benefits the community because it goes through a more rigorous approach. And so I just wanted to thank him for his, not just service, but his dedicated service and I think that's it. Thank you.
I just realized my mic was off. Mr. Grim.
Peter's a little taller than me. I see, just real quick, just wanted to address you guys about the Fiery Food Festival. That was fun. And as I look at Madam Mayor and the council, there were more of you there than weren't there. As I look at your staff and directors, there were more of you there that weren't there either. What a great time, what a great show. And I thought it was really well done, that it was planned while the while the farmer's market was there. You saw people mingling, you know, with all the artisan, you know, market. It was so well. I saw the Pasco Burger Company actually ran out of food at about two thirty and actually had to close their doors. So I know you guys get a lot of heat from up here and maybe you deserve it sometimes, but at the same time, you guys do deserve to hear when you get it right. And I think you really got it right with the Fire Food Festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, gentlemen, and then Ms. Lerman? If you can turn on the mic, please. There you go.
Hey, Mayor, counsel, my name is Rick Simon. I'm a planning consultant. I'm speaking on behalf of Todd and Stacy Kidwell, who are the applicants for the rezone application that's on your agenda under ordinance forty six eighty four.
Sir, sir, if you can keep your comments to not an article further down the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. This, so this will come up later.
Correct, it'll come up later.
All right, I will be back. Thank you.
Ms. Lerman?
Hello, Kim Lerman, sixty five fourteen West Park Street, Pasco. I want to share how proud I am of Pasco. From the Fiery Foods Festival to the constant activities of downtown Pasco that let's give, let's give some credit to where it's due. Jesse Rice, you've done a fantastic job with your vision. I don't know how you constantly keep coming up with some, another great idea, all the details taken care of. And having all these vendors and great promotion of the events such as National Parking Day. We enjoyed coming down Friday night. Yes, there was a competing event happening in Pasco and that is the gravel pit. Battle from Chihuahua and Pasco High School right there at the gravel pit. Every Pasco resident that I talked to on Saturday, including Friday night, has so much pride in Pasco. And a lot that has to do with our shared interest. And some of our shared interests, we just don't talk about enough. And when you take time to gather in one place like gravel pit at Green Brown Stadium and cheer on seeing youth trying their very best, working together, coaches engaged, cheerleaders engaged, showing off their athletic skill set that they've worked all year long, seeing students show up from all different backgrounds, coming together to celebrate each other. That is Pasco, that is Pasco pride. And that's what we need to get more back to. And so you did have quite a bit of competition Friday night. But the Fiery Foods Festival, National Park Day is just, your your calendar is continuously full of opportunities for citizens to get together and to be able to be one community. And so thank you for bringing that to Pasco. Another topic I wanted to talk about is our Pasco Police Department had this great vision of the Guardian Project. And since then, Kennewick and Richland has also followed Chief Rosskey's lead. The Guardian Project is is an opportunity to be a lifeline for the parents and caretakers of children who have autism. And the opportunity for them to be able to register their autistic child for their safety with the Pasco Police Department. And so in case they would ever need to have an interaction, the Pasco Police Department would be in the know of how to be able to help them out. I would love to see more of a connection, a collaboration with the Pasco School District in order to be able to have all life skilled students, all life skilled teachers be in the know about that because most life skilled teachers I talked to don't know about that, meaning parents don't know about that. And then when I talk to SRO officers, they also don't know about that. So however you can be able to support that collaboration, I'd greatly appreciate it. And I think many, many families would greatly appreciate that opportunity. So thank you, counsel, for the work that you guys do. And thank you, Pasco Police Department, too.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from council? Sorry, from Chambers? And I'll just say this, normally I would, I would allow you to make your your comments to to the council as a whole, to the council body. But you're right, Director Rice, you did a very good job, so I would, I will allow those comments towards you. But again, you know, if you could just make your comments towards the council. With no further comments from Chambers, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Reports from committees and or officers. Do we have any, our fellow council members that have attended a meeting or an event? And yes, in representation of the council.
Yeah, Mr. Harpster already took my thunder. Having attended the ribbon cutting at Sound Audiology, it's a beautiful complex. And as I told, the owners, it's a wonderful husband wife team. And they're actually looking at relocating to Pasco because they've kind of gone all in on us, which is really exciting to hear. I was actually looking at that space for my business. The build out was a little more than we could afford and they did exactly what or better than what I would have done. So it was kind of this personal level of pride of like, yeah, you know, someone took something I was looking at doing and did it, you know, really, really well. A business, as Mr. Harpster said, that we don't have those types of businesses here in Pasco. And so hopefully they're on the cutting edge and hopefully they can work with our veterans and other folks who are in absolute need of hearing aids. I'm sure my wife tells me more often than not, I'm not hearing, maybe it's I'm not listening, I'm not sure. But but I'll pass on those for now. But yeah, no, it was exciting. It was a great ribbon cutting, wonderful place. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also did attend the Fiery Foods Festival. I got there a little late, but I really enjoyed the whole setup. It was great to see staff. I thought the food was amazing, also liked the drinks, so I had a really good time. I didn't have anything hot because I'm still recovering from my wreck, but overall it was still, it was still a good time. And then I also attended a COPA meeting last week. And I will say that the COPA organization and the city, the state of Kalima is working so that when we get there, we don't have a a big agenda, a lot of work, but we're really to facilitate more partnership with the state of Kalima. And we look forward to what could be hopefully a long term partnership between our city and their state. So looking forward to that next month, so. And that's it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Attended the B F T board meeting last week. We continue to see a big increase in our demand for van pool, starting to recover, which is good because a lot of our numbers and metrics that we've been tracking, we're looking like we're back where we Because a lot of our numbers and metrics that we've been tracking, we're looking like we're uh back where we were prior to covid, so it's just nice is like. You want to take the pulse of something and look at where we're at versus where we were and we're pretty happy to see our numbers, it sounds like. This thing's done and over with and I'm glad could put that behind us because for everybody else here. That was awful time to go through, um we continue though to see an issue with supply chain, that is still the downside that we're. I guess if that's the one thing that we're holding on to from covid is. Supply chain is really impacting us and our ability to purchase vehicles, which is coming to increase cost, but. Um BFT has done an extraordinary job of looking at federal grants and capitalizing on those, so you're not seeing. A big uh dramatic increase to taxpayers and so we're really trying to run as lean as we can. And make sure that we're spreading every dollar we can, our our books look good, it just. Really excited, our general manager's been doing a great job with BFT overall and. Just happy to see that our numbers are starting to get back, writership seems to be doing really well in general too. We had a good fair event, it seems like everyone was really happy, we're looking forward to doing it again next year and just overall, we're we're pumped.
Thank you, and thank you for your continuous advocacy for um the district, Councilman Brown.
Um thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, um just a quick report on my meeting with BF Cog. Their meetings are tough, boy, they're they're on point, um Michelle Holt and her team, I applaud them for doing. Awesome work, very detailed, some of the things we talked about was twenty twenty three Transportation Improvement Program. Um very detailed, clean report, the congestion management process update, very thorough. Um and regional safe routes to school action plan, very, very detailed. Um I I'm definitely not going in detail tonight, it was a lot, but when I tell you impressed. Um Michelle and her team do some very, and I'll use the word immaculate work, they know what you're talking about. They give you good information and you always get to leave with a good takeaway. I kind of like going to meetings that way, with a good takeaway, you have something to kind of stir on before you leave, that equals a benefit. So these meetings that we attend and that we um give slight input on. Are very effective and they come back to benefit Pasco, so these are very collaborative meetings. And I'm glad that we are able to update you all on them, so we'll continue doing that and I'm again, I I hope they hear this. I'm very impressed at the detailed work that they bring forward to uh keep us all connected, so thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Oh, and also the fiery foods was awesome, I got to stand with Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, myself. And we recruited Jessica, is that right? Gina, it was a J in there somewhere, Gina, and we had an awesome time um getting that kicked off at the fiery food, so. Um I'll just piggyback with everyone else, great job Pasco, which is why we're the leading city and everyone wants to emulate us. So keep up the good work, thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Maloney, do you have any comments you want to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barajas, um yeah, briefly, just um just to add on. One one point on to um Councilmember Brown's um comment about the uh kickoff for Fiery Foods or the the proclamation, right? Uh we had the opportunity to 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 read it to you, um Mayor Barajas, and I appreciate you you receiving that. I know you were a little bit under the weather, I appreciate you being there anyways and allowing us uh you yourself to be the the focus of of that proclamation, so. Appreciate that, additionally, I just wanted to mention that um that Chow um. Uh Trattoria downtown downtown had their second second annual Aries in the alley uh uh event. So again, we're talking about actual operatic singing in an alley in downtown Pasco. And and it worked well the first time, they came back to do the second, so. Um the ability for us to utilize our spaces in downtown and turn non traditional spaces into. Um thriving economic development is something that I think that this this council um has taken seriously and will and hope. Hopefully the the city will continue to take it seriously into the future, this is an untapped way of making our downtown. Um vibrant without the large investment from either this uh the city or private businesses. So lots of opportunities there and there and you know, we got some people trying to do it right, thank you.
Thank you, um I'll give my two cents real quick, we have a a a brief agenda, but we want to get over the agenda quick. Um great event again for the Fiery Foods Festival and I want to thank um council members that were there uh present, especially. Uh Mayor Pro Tim Maloney and uh Councilman Brown uh that were there present to help me read the proclamation, Gina. Uh did the proclamation in Spanish and I was the recipient of the proclamation and acknowledgement of Hispanic Heritage Month beginning. Uh September fifteenth to end in October fifteen, so thank you, council, thank you community for that. Um and and there's other items that I will mention, but I'll mention it uh miscellaneous discussion because I do want to have Chief Gear. Um add a little bit more on that, but sorry, not Chief Gear, where am I at, apparently I'm still sick. Uh Chief Roski, Chief Roski, it's on you, um I think I'm missing Chief Gear right now. But thank you for being here too. Um we'll move on with our next item on the agenda, item number nine hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there too, none listed. Uh item number ten, ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings, uh ten A. Uh this is a quasi judicial matter, it's ordinance number forty six eighty three Barker Heights. Rezone from RS one to R three and we have Director Gonzalez uh leading the conversation on this.
Madam Mayor, if I could uh just walk us through the script again, uh so this is a quasi judicial hearing, uh so it's a proceeding to render a final decision on materials presented. It's defined as a proceeding which the council defines illegal rights, duties or privileges of specific parties in a hearing proceeding. Or other contested proceeding, the appearance of fairness doctrine applies and the hearing must be fair in three respects, form, substance and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. Any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding, which would affect the council members personally. Whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing the facts, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. And finally, uh any other conflict which which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known. Hearing none, uh are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Seeing none, please proceed and I just would remind, I know there was a gentleman that wanted to speak on this subject, but I would just remind us. That uh this item is now, it's a rezone, it is back in front of the council. Uh the uh there has been an open record hearing uh that has taken place and the hearing examiner has forwarded the recommendation to council. Uh that's all you're considering tonight, if you if you determine that more consideration is necessary, you can then set it for a closed record appeal hearing at which time. Uh the applicant would then be able to speak to the subject, but I do not recommend uh taking any uh uh additional uh comments at this time.
Uh good evening, uh this item is related again to a request to rezone approximately thirty five acres from the RS one zoning district to R three. For medium density residential, the site is located to the northwest of Burns and Broadmoor Boulevard as indicated on the vicinity map up on the screen. Uh the site was annexed recently in twenty seventeen with the zoning designation of RS one in accordance with the comprehensive plan land use at that time. In April uh this past year, of April of twenty twenty three, the site was approved for a comprehensive plan feature land use amendment. Uh of medium density residential, the proposed zone allows for a variety of residential housing types at a density of six to twenty unit. Uh six to twenty units per acre, uh the proposed rezone is inconsistent is consistent with the Pasco Comprehensive Plan and a uh public hearing was held. On July twelfth, twenty twenty three with the hearing examiner, uh the following the public hearing. Uh the hearing examiner recommended approval of the applicant's request for a rezone, uh no appeals have been received on this request.
Thank you for that, Director Gonzalez, are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, oh um so Councilman's wrong, do you have a question, do you have a motion? We can move on with the motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number four six eight three, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located west of Broadmoor Boulevard. Near the intersection of Iris Road, Pasco, Franklin County, Washington from RS one to R three. And further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Compos, all those in favor say aye. Sorry, M- Mayor Pro Tim Maloney, that was an aye?
That was an aye.
And so there's six, six ayes, one no. Thank you, and moving on to our next item on the agenda, item uh ten B, another quasi judicial matter.
Madam Mayor, the same uh uh qualifications would still apply, uh that they it's a quasi judicial hearing, it uh is to render a final decision. Uh it's proceeding which uh the council defines illegal rights and duties of the specific parties. Uh the appearance of fairness doctrine applies both informed substance or informed substance and appearance. Uh the council members should consider whether there's a potential conflict uh with regard to a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. Any direct or indirect financial interest, uh whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing the facts, whether there has been any ex parte contact. Uh and finally, if there's uh any conflict that council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. Uh if any council member has any of these concerns related to this matter, now would be the time to make those known. Seeing none, uh are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings, seeing none?
Thank you, uh ten B is ordinance number forty six eighty four, TSK two thousand nine LLC rezone. From R four to C one, and again, Director Gonzalez.
Evening again, uh this item is related to a request to rezone approximately four acres. From R four high density residential uh to C one retail business. The site is located uh at the northwest corner of Burns Road and Broadmoor Boulevard as uh illustrated on the screen. The site was annexed into the city in twenty fifteen and assigned with the R one low density zoning district in accordance with the comprehensive plan land use at that time. The site has been subject to two land use amendments since annexation, the first occurring in twenty sixteen. Uh which it was assigned a high density residential land use and a R four zoning district and then in April of twenty twenty three. The site was subject to a land use amendment changing the designation to a mixed residential and commercial. Land use which accommodates a wide variety of housing types and commercial retail services. Uh following the following the adoption of the new land use, uh the applicant followed with a request for a rezone to the commercial retail zoning district or C one. A public hearing was held on July twelfth, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three with a hearing examiner, the after the public hearing. Uh a recommending a recommendation of approval of the applicant's uh for a rezone was made by the hearing examiner. Uh the proposed rezone is consistent with the Pasco Comprehensive Plan and no appeals have been received on this request, thank you.
Thank you for that, Director Gonzalez, are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number four six eight four, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located along the northwest corner. Of the intersection of Burns Road and Broadmoor Boulevard, Pasco, Franklin County, Washington from R three to C one. And further authorize publication by summary only.
I'll second that, there was a motion and seconded by Councilwoman Roach, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously, thank you, uh item ten B, ten C, resolution number forty three seventy two. Uh I one eighty two and Broadmore Interchange Construction Management PSA and we have Director Worley for that.
Madam Mayor, members of council, uh I know this is going to be a shock to you, but I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Director Sarah for tonight's item, thank you.
Welcome.
Evening Mayor and council members, we are presenting to you a professional services agreement for construction management of our. Interchange improvements at I one eighty two and Broadmore. Uh the decision to have a consultant perform the services for us. Was based on workload and availability of our own inspectors and project managers. Uh the whole scope of this um agreement includes inspection, documentation, coordination with. Uh state and federal agencies which will be required since this project is occurring in a state facility. And um we we propose uh recommend the approval of this agreement, I'm happy to. Discuss any details you may have questions on.
Perfect, thank you Deputy Director Sarah, do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four three seven two, authorizing the city manager to execute a PSA with Atlas Consultant LLC. For construction management services for the I one eighty two and Broadmore Interchange Improvement Project.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Compos, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously, thank you, and with that, we move on with the rest of our agenda, item number eleven on the agenda, unfinished business, do we have any? Unfinished business, nothing, uh item twelve, new business, none listed. Item thirteen miscellaneous discussion, or I will open it for any miscellaneous discussion from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh first off, a couple of dates from uh Director Jacob Gonzalez.
Good evening, council, uh wanted to let the council and the public uh know that uh this Thursday, the Pasco Planning Commission will host two public hearings. Uh to consider uh recommendations of the twenty 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 four community development block rent allocations. Um so that uh will be a recommendation from staff to the planning commission that will soon be in front of council uh for approval. And then also on the same night will be the first of two public hearings associated with the twenty twenty three comprehensive plan amendment docket. This uh meeting is is just to establish which items will be reviewed and evaluated as part of the docket's two part process. And also want to share that significant progress is being made on the Housing Action Implementation Plan. And the draft is out for public comment right now and that on October seventeenth. At four o'clock here in City Hall Chambers, we will be hosting a fourth uh housing stakeholder workshop to gather more input and feedback from our housing stakeholders. So if you have any questions about that, please uh direct any comments uh towards our department, thank you.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez, um city manager.
Uh then also wanted to uh touch base with uh Mister Rice a little bit on Fiery Foods and I think he had a couple of slides to. Show off as well.
Good evening, uh Mayor and Council, I appreciate both your and all the community feedback on Fiery Foods, uh we do think it was a great event, but I'd be. Remiss to say that that event took a lot of staff time across all the departments, it was our entire recreation team, communications. Uh public works for our traffic planning control, uh fire, they were our backup paramedics in case something went wrong at the pepper eating contest, so. And we also had several staff involved in that contest, uh two were actual winners, uh we had a couple from our animal shelter participate as well. And of course, all the staff that helped man those informational booths, I think that was an excellent cluster showing of all our uh team out there, so. Um but uh we did end up with four winners of the pepper eating contest, um unexpectedly, of course, we were hoping just for first and second. Um so two of those were city staff, um due to having more winners than we had medals, we are planning a follow up presentation here at City Council in the future. As soon as we get our uh medals remade to be finalists, um we're also trying to figure out how to limit our uh future finalists just down to two without putting anybody actually in the. Ambulance unit, so we'll be uh working on some improvements next year for that, so. But I think in total, we estimated between a thousand and twelve hundred people attended, I think it was a pretty good event. Uh the farmer's market vendors that attended enjoyed it, had very good sales day, several of the vendors sold out, were in particip- uh participated in that as well, so. Um I can tell you we already set uh ideas for next year in the planning, um including something I want to touch on, we provided, it's kind of uh. It close to me are the stickers we handed out, um one of the staff that really helped assist was one of my IT staff who in her uh. Spare time or hobby time actually created this ghost pepper icon uh to help kick us off this year. But um in helping our engagement and marketing next year, she has an additional collection of fourteen different cartoons already created next year that we hope to release and. And tantalize and tease the public into looking to Fiery Foods next year, so I think again, it's a whole community environment that makes this sort of thing happen, so. So I appreciate all the departments that helped uh make that possible. Uh and I can tell you that we'll be starting our Cinco de Mayo planning here in a couple of short weeks as soon as recreation recovers from all my other great ideas, so. Which uh rolling into that, one of those was the uh International Parking Day, which we did uh hold the first one, I believe, based on the. Parking Day website, we're the first city in Eastern Washington to actually host that event. Probably about fifteen over in the west side, Seattle, uh including Seattle Parks and Rec does something similar, but good event, unfortunately, I uh. Wasn't able to stand up to the sausage fest or some of the other big guy, the big football games, but. Uh good turnout, gives us a lot of ideas for the future, uh happy to see uh who did who was able to come out and attend and again, more ideas for that coming next year, so. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
I don't know who else has a pepper mascot, but City Pasco does, um pretty cool.
I don't know who else has a pepper mascot, but City Pasco does. Um, pretty cool.
And it's named Pascal.
That is our ghost pepper, yes. We look forward to the additional thirteen names as we think of those.
And uh, uh, Chief Roski obviously has an update on the Balia.
Just before you go Chief Roski, that's what I was gonna mention. I was so proud to be there in person, um, not to take your thunder. But we have four new officers and I'll let Chief Roski add the rest of the details.
Thank you Madam Mayor, uh, Mr. Uh, Lincoln as well for the, the kind comments. And yeah, it was a, a, a big lift over the last year. To uh, launch a uh, the first regional police academy in the state of Washington. Uh, historically, that's always been held in uh, in Seattle. So to graduate twenty-eight. Uh, recruits in um, just under five months was a big lift, but we are proud of the accomplishments and where, and where the uh, uh. The, the students that are now hitting the streets, all of them um, will be returning to the basin areas. Um, I think the farthest was Grant County, uh, one or two up the valley. And then the lion's share of them right here in the tri-cities that will uh, be providing law enforcement services and police services to our individual um, uh, cities. And, and four of them right here in Pasco. Um, I have to take just a moment and thank council for your support and your um, guidance and commitment uh, to, to believing that we could pull this off. Uh, city manager's office, uh, there were a lot of unknowns. Uh, and uh, as the director of the training academy mentioned, to pull something like this off in ten months. Putting city uh, or state government involved is a big lift. That doesn't happen, so. It, it came with uh, your support and belief that we could make this happen. So with that, uh, proud of where we are. Uh, the next one launches in three weeks and uh, we're off on a, on another five-month venture, so thank you.
Thank you for that. I just wanna highlight uh, something uh, Chief Roski said. Um, it's, we had the directors from, um, remind me again, uh, Director Monica Alexander was there.
Correct.
Senator.
Levick.
Levick was the, Levick was there. We had, I mean, for being the first class, the first graduating class. We had a good show, good support, not only from the, our legislators, our senators, community members, but the everyone, staff as well. Uh, so, thank you again for, for putting that on, but that's not the last thing that's happening. Uh, here beginning September twenty-first, if I'm not mistaken, is the first day of the um, Ac- Academia. Academia Comunitaria, I'm trying to say it right. Uh, the uh, citizens, Police Citizens Academy in Spanish. The second one in a very long time. Um, so, I'll reach out to the community. If you know anyone that is Spanish speaking and is interested in knowing the works of uh. What the police department does, what our officers do, why responding a certain way, they're Spanish speaking only, please refer them to. Chief Roski who can, where do they re- sign up?
Social media has a sign up uh, for us and you can obviously call the front desk and uh, at the police department. And we'll get you directed where you need to be for an application. So it uh, first class is uh, Thursday, if that's the twenty-first.
The twenty-first. So you heard it here, uh, don't miss it, don't miss out. Uh. Police Citizens Academy in Spanish for your neighbors, your family members and anyone that is interested in knowing what the police department in Pasco does. Uh, so it's out there. Um. Any other questions, comments, uh, comments really from our council, uh, Councilwoman Roach?
Um, Mayor, thank you for recognizing me. There's been a resident who I'm, I'm confident has. Contacted you all, um, of regarding this issue that is about his personal property and he's asked me. To continue to relay the message and hopefully get a response from each one of you, um, and help prioritize this. He's been a Pasco resident for many decades, uh, living in a neighborhood that he is trying to sell his home. Um, but it's been an issue for many years now and he has worked the code enforcement route. Of making a complaint and he seems to be in um, kind of an impossible situation. Um, and so I'm just gonna lay it out there. The, the owner of the home um, is deceased. The owner's child lives there. The bank now owns this property. Um, and so they don't respond to the city's code enforcement complaints about it being a nuance. Um, the city is doing, the staff is doing their part in putting a lien on the property. Um, and trying to leverage what they have within the PMC and yet, this homeowner. Is being negatively impacted in a way that their home is unable to be sold. Probably not likely to be sold at the, the valuation that it could be sold at because of this neighboring situation. And so what he's asked me to pass along to you is the um. The request that we look at our PMC as it regards to this, that there is a loophole. That allows people like this to have a nuisance property negatively affect those around them. Um, and not, without any consequence to them. And so I have talked, talked to city manager about it, but it's something that I'm bringing up to you all as the policymakers of this council. That's something that I think you will continue to hear from him, because if you do follow the real estate market, their houses are not moving as fast. Anymore, um, because of the, the prices currently. Um, and so he is in a really tough pickle. His name is uh, Mike Barachoa. And if you would please respond to him and also be willing to be open to considering what he's asking of us as a council. That's it.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from, any other discussion from council members? Mayor Perdamaoni, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mayor Ross, thank you. Um, quickly to um, on um, Councilmember Roach's perspective, um. I'd like to ask uh, city manager Lincoln. I know there was some um, quote-unquote zombie properties, um, laws that were being considered up in Olympia. Um, to help deal with, you know, with blighted properties and in, in some sort of limbo between foreclosure, homeownership and, you know, truly starting to blight a neighborhood. Um, I do not recall however, um, if, wh- what, what, if any changes were made in state law, if those were, if those were successfully passed through or, or anything was done. So I don't want to put you on the spot of trying to remember um, several years ago, um. But um, either if you remember now or if you could follow up with perhaps our um, our legislative assistance, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you for that. Um, any other comments from council members?
Ye- yes, I did have one, sorry, um, Mayor, I did have another, another comment and I was gonna um. So we, we passed a result, we, we passed a um, um, a decision to um, to allow for more disclosure of information. And I was hoping that the city staff could lay out what sort of process that is uh, for the public to understand. You know, who is it that will be disclosing what? Um, is someone waiting for, for, you know, our city attorney to disclose something? Is it our city clerk? Is it individual council members? I think I understand the process would go a long ways to helping the community understand what action we took.
Uh, tha- that's, uh, I, I would say it's entirely up to the council on what direction you'd like to give for. Um, what type of disclosure, if you want a, a news release or, or how you'd like to disclose things, that's, that's. Uh, council directive to staff and we're happy to accommodate.
So if I understand correctly, and I just, I'm, I'm reflecting this back, um, no, no judgment or implication intended. Um, there is no direction to staff at right this second from your perspective. There's no direction from council to staff as to what action to take next?
Correct.
So I guess I would uh, put it back on to our council, um. We passed, we've made an action, but that didn't resolve in any thing. Um. How would we like to proceed on that? Is this something that we'd like to set up a small subcommittee just to make sure that we have, we, we have a good thought into this direction? I know it's late, I'm out of town, it's now midnight local time, um, I'm getting a little froggy, I'll be honest. Um, but is there, um, what process would we like to address the action that we, that we as council chose to take?
And I'll open it to council, um, to comment. What direction do you?
I'd say if there's, if there's a feel that we do need a subcommittee, I'd be fine to serve on that. I mean, I, again, was been for. Councilman Brown, I believe he's a great guy and uh, but it's an honor to sit next to him, so I mean, if there's any discussion how we wanna proceed with this, I'm more than willing to volunteer for this.
Yeah, thank you. Councilman Campos.
Mayor, I just, um. My preference is it just seems as if, now that we can discuss it as individuals, it just, if inquiries come in, we, we discuss it. If not, if we want to be united, I, I don't think a press release hurts anything, but um. I don't know that it's required either. It just seems as if, um. That, when they come in, we, we discuss it.
Right.
Really believe I understand the suggestion of the subcommittee, um. So I'm simply gonna say that, uh, I think that some of the comments that were made at public comment by the residents of Pasco. Are in alignment with, you know, how I feel about disclosing that topic. Um, there are, we are public servants and we constantly get defamed in this chambers. Via email, via phone, and that's what we're subject to. We don't get cover for that. And that's fair, because we put ourselves out there to be criticized and it sucks to be on the receiving end of it. But we also have to have some of these conversations in public because when it does cross the line of a threat or a racial slur. Then it should be shared in public and it should be known. So, glad we heard from some people today and hope we hear from some more.
Uh, so the directive to staff, uh, Mayor Perdama, would you like for us to issue out a statement? Or as others have suggested, when that um, is brought up, have that discussion, address it at that point? What would your suggestion be?
Yeah, my only comment on the subcommittee was just so we had people to think about it, so as, well, you know, we have seven people with seven different opinions. Um, and we could talk for a long time in this meeting about that, so I was wondering if you wanna focus. It sounds like maybe that's not the right answer, that's, that's totally fine. I have no, no strong preference for it, it's just a comment. Um, from my perspective, I would love, my, my recollection of things can sometimes be faulty. I would greatly appreciate um, some talking points from staff if appropriate, but I think that if it's. What I don't want is I don't want each one of us seven council members being approached by the same people and coming and having seven different conversations. Um, some of which our recollections may be at odds with each other and, and that would suggest to the public perhaps to lose some confidence and faith in, in. Whether or not we're being honest and forthright. Um, and I would just hate to be in that position. So um, I, you know. Um, you know, I can, I can say I, I agree um, strongly with uh, Councilmember Roach's uh, perspective of, of things like this and the light shone on them. Um, that is how you drive these things out of the shadows and how you, how you deal with them. So I, I agree wholeheartedly, um, that, that, that disclosing this, you know. It's going to be ultimately of uh, public benefit. Um, and it'll, and certainly it allows, I think, us to defend each other. Much more strongly than we could have otherwise. Um, um. Yeah, our, our hands have been very strongly tied, um, and in a way that looks like we are trying to hide something as opposed to, um. You know, trying to do the, do the best and protect the city and our, our fellow, you know, fellow council members and, and citizens, um, as well as we can. So I guess, uh, my perspective is I would love some assistance, making sure that we are all reading from the same sheet of music, not to direct us to read a, like a, um, a verbatim. Press release, but just a, a reminder of what, what cover, the topics covered, that'd be lovely to have. Otherwise, um, I'm fine with just us addressing it individually if, as need be.
Okay.
So I guess I'm pretty vague on this one. I don't have a strong preference. I'm just glad it's gonna be out in the open and so I defer to my other, my fellow council members if they have to.
Thank you Mayor Perdamaoni. Um, I'll agree uh, that this is not something that needs to be, can't uh. Not be discussed. Um, so the, the, the idea or being more outspoken of these situations and addressing them as they come. Um, yeah, that's the way we should do it. Um, Councilman Serrano, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, just the thought of, I mean, obviously it's nine plus tonight, so to have a intellectual conversation about this. At this point might be difficult. Um, if it's something that if we get a lot of public inquiry about, maybe we will note it for another meeting. Early on, um, and obviously. Um, I guess we, we as a council should ensure that. You know, we're all comfortable with that. I'm, Irving, I mean, I, I hate to throw you out there, but you were the target of this letter. And it's, it's obviously made public. I do not want to put any unnecessary or undue stress on you. To have additional conversation about something so pointed. Um. At you and, and so. I, I give strong deference if it's not something that you intend or want to be on another. Um, meeting topic. And, and again, I think that's something that we can discuss later, more quietly. Not to sweep it under the rug, but to be aware of the pain that this has caused. Um. You know, I, I don't want this to turn into just continually raising the issue. And, and obviously we cannot turn a blind eye to what's happening, not just what has happened. Um, but again, I, 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 I don't want to turn this into, you know, more pain for you men.
Thank you. Um, so it, to me, it sounds like we don't have a directive right now. Um, we just make the promise to be more open about these conversations and um, bring them to staff. Um, when we do know of something that needs to be discussed, so at this point, we do not have any directive. Okay. Um, but before we close our meeting, just before we close our meeting, I do wanna announce that District Six uh, applications are still being accepted. We do have a couple of applications already in place. However, this is an invite to the community. This is, this is who we are. This is what the council does. We not only put our face out there to be targeted, but we also speak for you. If you feel you have the passion to represent your community, your district, District Six, please fill out an application, please apply. And um, step into that position. That's all I have to say. It is nine oh eight with no further comments from council members or staff. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone.